...regular monthly meeting on June eighteenth, two thousand and thirteen. How it's a ten motion. Motion made as air second. Motion second. Any additions or corrections? You're being up to the vote, all is favor. I propose motion period. Comes the first voice of the public, this is the first opportunity to next town board meeting. If anyone would like to address the town board on any issue, we ask that you step up to the podium and announce your name and your home address for the record. Is there anyone who would like to address the board this time?
My name is Steve Mushak and we're here to tell a deal thing. What else do you want me to say?
Home address.
If you want to.
Sure. Home address, please.
Home address is thirty-two twenty Hans Road.
Better?
How you doing?
Great.
I'm here because I have a little situation in my house that I've tried to have addressed now for many years and I haven't been able to get anywhere. So I went and took a copy of an easement to the highway superintendent and give it to him. And for whatever reason, he believes that it's not authentic. And it hasn't been registered with the county. Now, I don't like to air my business out at the regular grocery store where we go, but I get to talk to him or I get to talk to him. I asked him about the pipe across the street because it directly affects my property. I mean, didn't know where I live. So many years ago, nineteen eighty-four, we made an easement. Said I would take all the water coming down off of Hans Road onto my property, down through a distribution box into a pipe. They went underground for, I think, a hundred and twenty feet, straight here in the easement. And then it went down into a draw that was there already, where the water went, the way it's supposed to go. Now, I got a swamp. And I've got pictures of it. The pipe itself has been covered completely. Now, that gets back to what I'm talking about across the street. Now, I've been in the business for a long time. To me, as you know, I've built a lot of roads and bridges and highways, you know, and you always have driveways. And you do sluices. You make sure that it's big enough to hold the water. It's simple. Well, I think you might fix this one about ten times now. And each time, you use a crew, you use the men that has them up there, the truck, the gravel, the operator, the machine, everything ends up on my property. Because it never, ever is going to hold that little twelve-inch pipe. So when I asked him about it, I just wasn't getting over with him. And he knows that I wanted, I wanted to have something done about what's going on on my property, so you don't have to do it. He told me his lawyer's name, which I, I'm sorry, he must be the guy. But I don't know who you are. But anyways, you know, to talk to you. And I said I wasn't going to talk to you. Why should I talk to you? I have an easement. And I expect the town to honor it, that's all. Because I give up my property so that you could do the better thing, take the water off the road, right? And, and so it goes into a draw and it goes down into the creek the way it's supposed to. Now, willy-nilly, it goes wherever it wants to go. And I've been talking to this man right here for about ten years now, trying to get him to do something. And he won't. Must be a joke to you. I pay, I pay money on that taxes, on that land, year in, year out, had been for thirty years. And I don't understand what gives you the right to tell me that I don't have an easement. And that you checked it out. And that it's not been registered with the county. And you know that's not true.
Sir, why don't you direct it to the board?
Please, yeah, address the board, please.
I have Judy found one for me, the original document today. I have the document here that they certified for me. And this is the copy that I have. I made a copy for him. I never gave it to him. Of the easement itself.
Does this say, for a copy of this?
Yeah, I believe it is.
So, so why don't you hold on here?
Okay. This is what I got today, because this has the signatures on it.
So I can take this?
You sure can. She has the original document.
Okay.
Okay? I told her to put it on her lock and key. And again, I don't, I don't cause most trouble. I don't come down here to cause trouble. But I, I'm not getting anywhere.
Why don't you see me after the meeting and give me contact information, of course, with the attorney, and the special invite and...
No, see, I can't hear.
Why don't you see me after the meeting so I can give you contact information?
Okay.
All right?
All right.
All right, thank you.
I do have also pictures here of the pipe itself. The water just goes up into the air because it's got no place to go. And then it goes willy-nilly. If you're looking at it, if you can see what it is I'm talking about. There's pictures of the water. Yeah, come down. Oh, that's, I'm sorry, that buddy. Be my dad, buddy. Thank you.
Is there anyone else, please?
My name's Chris Ostrowski. I live in Conklin, one ninety-seven Schofield Road. And bringing a, yeah, and this is Delmoil.
This is Delmoil. I'm in Conklin, Schofield Road.
And we're bringing two here. We'd like to have a Property Rights Day. And we have a proclamation and five reasons why to celebrate Property Rights Day. We have this, it's been adopted in the town of Conklin already. We brought it to them back probably three weeks ago. And they voted on it that night. It's July twenty-second, the day we were shooting for go for the proclamation. And I don't, is it my property or the board already? So you have, you have, you probably already have all the papers. Okay. Did you get a chance to read through it and look at it? And I see it wasn't on the agenda. I didn't know whether it was going to be or whether they asked to put it on the agenda. I have no idea how it was brought to you originally, presumably. But we're just asking that you take it into consideration to have a Property Rights Day. Just to recognize, we all have rights. The amendments, it touches on the Fourteenth Amendment, the First Amendment, Second Amendment. And it's just rights that we as Americans have. And why not let people know that we're proud to be Americans and have property rights? And let people know that property rights means something. They're not just a word. Like you got Father's Day and Mother's Day and Grandparents' Day. Why not have a Property Rights Day? Recognition. And the property owners, which I'm sure there's many here, we, we pay the taxes that allow people to have the freedoms that we have. And this is just part of it. This is just one of these things in the amendment. And I think the amendment is being compromised as we go along. I think it's deteriorating. And I think we as Americans and people of our towns and cities and states should rise up and say, you know, we're proud to be Americans and we're proud to have what we have. Let's recognize them. Now, we don't recognize the rights that we have. We don't hear about them until they're taken away. And then it's too late to do anything. But if you join together and you have a strong bid, and it's for everything, anything, we don't want the government taking stuff from us. We have a right to bear arms. And why is that? Because that's from the government, believe it or not. That's what it was there for. And past history can show what is happening. And that's all we're asking.
And for record that we are from the town of Conklin, but we had the town of Conklin, they passed it and they approved it over there. And then we had fellow town people, people ask us if we could present it to your, you group.
Chris, you put that right on the money. That was the intent of the Property Rights Proclamation, Property Rights Day. With that said, when this was introduced last month, we had the discussion that this was not being linked to anything. The thought process was to present something that everyone would sign on to. And presently, in our society locally here, we're entrenched in a very controversial issue of natural gas.
Which is really has nothing to do with natural gas. I didn't have it by mind when I was talking about it. Not that this is an issue, but that's got nothing to do with the Property Rights Day. And this isn't something we made up here. This is something from another, other town, state. I'm not exactly sure where it came from, but I think it's a great idea.
It came from Ann Marie Musens, from the town of Onyanta, who actually approached me about it. And I was fully supportive of the whole property rights issue. And the downside about it is, I mean, how can you say no to property rights? How can anybody say no to your property rights? The way it was presented through emails, that this is an issue of drilling, anti-drillers, it's just not an issue because of that, that the board is interested in taking on. And communication through several board members. And it just felt that because of the way it was handled, unfortunately, the proclamation is on board now.
I was unaware. I'm not a computer person.
Yeah. So, but I appreciate.
No, that's, that's fine. You have the right to do that. And we're just prepared to let that sit.
And I, myself, being a strong supporter of property rights, was, and signed up to this in a heartbeat. But the board doesn't feel that it would be appropriate because it has turned into a drilling, anti-drilling issue.
Unfortunately.
Unfortunately.
Not by us, I'll tell you that.
I thank you.
All right, no, that's fine.
But to go to add to that, about drilling, it's not about drilling, it's about agricultural, you know, where you have the right to produce.
Exactly.
So they're going to have a chance of taking agriculture away from U.S. citizens. It's going to be all exported by export, import companies with Brazil and China. So they're going to have control of our lands.
That was the intent. Exactly.
The Property Rights Declaration, Agenda Twenty-one.
Agenda Twenty-one. It's really, it's not Agenda Twenty-one, but it has, it has a lot to...
Question from, if I'm not mistaken, just want to read the question from there.
Indirectly, yes. Right. Yes. Thank you very much.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else, please?
Good evening. Everybody staying cool in here.
Coolest place to be.
It's still hot outside. I still support what the gentleman just said. There's no reason why I couldn't.
Could you identify yourself?
My name is Mike Gordon, on Powers Road in Town Binghamton. I know it sounds like a gas thing. Everything sounds like a gas thing.
Unfortunately.
Unfortunately.
Everything seems to be twisted that way.
Right. And I realize that. My fears are deeper than with not only the towns, the cities, the villages, the state, and the, and the country itself. Where does it all end eventually? Do we end with, you know, dishes on our roofs for satellite TV? No trampolines in the backyard? I mean, I realize we have ordinances for junk cars and things like that. But if we're not careful with that, we don't recognize our rights, sooner or later, you're going to lose everything. Because it is that way. We're fighting the Second Amendment right now on, on arms.
Okay.
We won a little bit. We did lose me being a person who owns firearms. They couldn't get their way. What do they do next? They buy a polyamorous machine from all producers. So now there's no ammunition laws. We have to be very careful about the ways the government operates. And that's why it, it still should be honored as a rights day, a property rights day, regardless of whether it's gas or not gas. We can go back to that issue many times. And we're not done with it yet, you know, that. There'll still be some heated battles about that issue. But this itself, I think, stands for the people that really do care about their rights. What you can do with it and what you can't. Because you get the trickle-down effect. And that's what happens there. And then all of a sudden, somebody turns around and says, what do you mean I can't have an above-ground pool? We can have any ground, but you can't have above-ground. That's what I said. Where does it all end? I just think again about it, please. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Hello, I'm Lucia, forty-eleven Salmy Road. And just up here to clarify a few things. At the June fourth work session of the town of Binghamton, Mr. Fitzsimmons proposed the Property Rights State Declaration. And at that meeting, as you recall, it was stated, and it is also in the minutes of record, that the proposition, proclamation had nothing to do with gas drilling. In a subsequent email that went out to coalition members, of which I did receive an email, it was clearly stated, "The antis are claiming that you are the minority. They say that you should not have a say when it comes to your property. It's time to show them who's boss. It's time to show the antis that we are the majority and that they are messing with the wrong people." Direct quote from the email. And I would like to state publicly for the record that I feel threatened by the confrontational rhetoric included in this email. I would also like to ask the coalition members how they feel about the Property Rights Declaration as it relates to compulsory integration. New York state law allows drillers to incorporate and drill under the property of landowners despite their objection. All that is required is that the driller controls sixty percent of the land and make a request of the New York DEC. A landowner who does not desire drilling for whatever reason cannot prevent it. How are my property rights being protected in this circumstance? I can only assume that the members of the coalition will work with me to urge the DEC to eradicate the policy of compulsory integration. Thank you.
Is there anyone else, please?
Timothy Stank, Conklin, New York. I am the email guy for the coalition. Sorry if on, if you feel threatened by me. I'm just passing on the news as I, as it comes to me. I'm going to have to put an email out to our members. We have over eight hundred family units in our coalition, which correlates over, you know, if you figure there's maybe two adults in a family and then some kids over the age eighteen. You can do a math, do the math, that's a lot of residents in the towns of Conklin and Binghamton. We represent over twenty thousand acres of your town and the town of Conklin. These people, you may not see it, you don't see it, but since I'm the email guy, I'm the one that gets the hundreds of emails every week, asking the questions. And so I'm the one they look to for the answers. So the first question is going to be, and this was not brought to a vote, to whether to put it forward in front of, you know, when you're not. So whose decision was it?
Mine.
So rest on your shoulders?
Yes.
Okay. So, but you did ask?
No. I communicated individually with the board.
Okay. And they, was it unanimous that they didn't want to do this? Can we ask for a full vote or?
It's not official business that we're dealing with. We're trading. We don't want to.
So what does that mean?
So that means I don't think we should be having a discussion about what individual board members' opinions are.
Okay. So who should the sixteen hundred-plus members contact and leave questions? Because I really don't want them to handle all the, should they have that?
It's a separate issue from this Property Rights Declaration or proclamation.
Well, it's not. It, the email will be going out about the fact that you guys don't want to go ahead with it. And they're going to be asking me more questions. So should I?
Have them come here.
Have them come here?
Sure.
Okay.
Two of you.
To you. Okay. So it's more of a... Is it something we will, we want to look at later date, or is it dead for good?
We're just not ready to move on to the next one.
And so should we continue to come every meeting or bring more people next time and discuss it different? How do you?
It's an, it's an open meeting. People are, of course, want to come.
And how do we go about making it official business?
It has to be put on the agenda.
Was it on the last agenda?
No. It was just as a page to agenda. Kind of work session.
Okay, so how do we get it on an agenda?
Has it got for me?
Three.
Yes.
Okay, so everything's three. Okay. Thank you.
Is there anyone else, please?
Steve Grayson, Brady Hill Road, three nine six six. This will be a totally mundane compared to the ones you just heard. It's property, my fifty-two acres. I have so much things destroyed by ATVs. I realize you can't do anything about them. The sheriffs don't really care that much. I can understand that. So far this past week, when I was driving away from my house, one guy driving west was flipping out his buddy behind him. I got in a break since after and watched. The moron went and said this moron could actually drive to see me. And he did. Another day driving out with my motorcycle, guy bounces out of woods on his ATV right in front of me and I have no idea how I missed this. And then I've also had my back hold with the woods and re-rubbing ditches in my woods because after one rainstorm, I looked in my backyard, it was dammed and flooded. I'm like, what the hell is going on? And the ATVs have just chewed up the fire road like you would a lake. I realized, you know, this is a ridiculous subject. You can't do much about this. What I'm asking is, could you put something in like the newsletter, which I think is a great venue, and just say, these things are not road legal. These things, you just don't take onto somebody's property without your permission. That's all I'm asking.
We've done that in the past.
I understand that.
More than willing to reiterate it in our next edition.
That, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Because the damage, you gotta, you gotta see it to believe it. These machines just rip the hell out of stuff.
Yeah, I've seen them in action.
And, you know, there's, it could have been a fatality and an injury and then that's bad. And then one of them could have been me and that's like really bad.
Right. Just to let you know, the sheriff's department is trying to go after these guys. Because I have a lot of communication with sheriff's deputies. And they are taking these ATVs and they have more samples of them serious. And they're going after us. There are ways that they're trying to communicate with the sheriff to permit them to force it even more. But the sheriff just isn't seeing it in his eyes that much of a problem. But they do take it serious.
When I see them drive down Brady Hill once every three months, they probably don't see that much. And I know the one lady deputy sat there in my driveway and watched the ATV go down a freaking road right in front of her. I asked her, well? Well, what? Never mind. I think I see the problem.
Okay. I would communicate to the deputies and I know that our, our safety needs.
And so if you, if you could put a note again?
We will.
I, I very much appreciate it.
Thank you. Yes. Is there anyone else? If we've been going, close the floor, bring it back to the board. Moving on to communications announcements. Neighborhood Watch Committee will meet the next Wednesday, September twenty-fifth, seven o'clock at Town Binghamton Community Center. They are going to take the summer off. Item number two, Town Binghamton voluntary fire company has announced that their angle chicken barbecue, because of renovations at Brookshead Elementary, will be canceled for two thousand and thirteen. Girl Scouts Troop three zero zero five two, we have to extend a huge debt of gratitude to, to the Girl Scout troop for the donation of flowers at the Town Binghamton Community Center and Jackson Park. The downtown memorial baseball game will be scheduled for the Binghamton Mets, Mets next Sunday, twenty-eighth. And what time does that start?
Next Sunday. Two Sundays. Two Sundays.
Two Sundays. What's that, next Sunday?
Next Sunday.
I'm looking beyond that. Next Sunday to me will be following week, twenty-eighth.
The Sunday versus that Sunday?
Mike, are there still tickets available for anybody that's interested or?
I think so.
Okay. Just call the highway department for information. And the ZBA meeting will reconsider the zoning case of Morgan Grove Pet Sematary has been set for July, July thirty-first at seven o'clock P.M. Are there any other communications or announcements? If we're being on, move on official committee reports. We are in receipt of the town clerk's report for the month of June two thousand and thirteen. We are receiving the office of the code enforcement report for the month of June two thousand and thirteen. And we are also receiving supervisor's report for the months of June and May two thousand and thirteen. Are there any other official committee reports? If we're being on, move on the supervisor's report, short and sweet. Moving on to unfinished business, town coal violations update. Mr. Patness?
Thirty-five, thirty-five Third Way Street is sold, so is thirty-five sixty-four. Thirty-five thirty-five, they plan on rehabbing it in thirty-five sixty-four. I believe they're going to run the works and maybe take it down. So that's two properties that will be cleaned up for the last meeting.
What about the back of the road?
I spoke with Alan today. We're going to talk to the judge and see what he wants to do for it.
So also, let's think, looking back, what about the Marjory House? You want to make the talk to Tim, who called about two inch demolition or something, or the past few days, we're still looking and trying to figure that out from Conklin?
Still, still trying to communicate with town Conklin. They backed up their, their bid for the demolition.
Have they even gone, have they told each other, you know, the places you ever? I don't think they've done that yet. Until they start cornering, looking at, giving them bids, probably an estimate.
Anything else?
That's about it. I'll give it up.
Okay, Town Binghamton Historical Museum.
Yes, I actually had a meeting with the director of the West Museum. Had some very interesting words with her and she gave me some places to contact, to talk to about, again, if we move forward with this and basically the town quickly get over, to try to find ways where it would work well together or not. They don't have the plan ahead of time. So she, she gave me several email connections and I sent them to Consperson Roundstone, so we'll move on to that.
Item number three, town all building renovations and additions.
We're working on a room over here, the clerk's room. We're working on. She's happy. She's happy. We did, we did, we did have a little lamp problem there. It sprayed, that's, a couple of weeks ago. That's why you're seeing all of that big white curb around.
All right, item number four, before we handle cupcake sports.
I talked to them today, and actually they're gonna, should be sending us a preliminary book by the end of this week, so what I thought I'd do is ask Becky to maybe make a copy for everyone, because it's about ninety pages, so we don't want anybody to be going through a pretty hell from their own printer. And then I thought we'd like to have everybody review it, have a work session, and then see if we can get it finalized by the end of August, at our next board meeting, by August. So probably need to establish a work session sometime before that, like after you guys have it, to review it, and then have a work session to go over anything. We met with them for quite a while, so hopefully there's not going to be a lot of changes, but there's some, I'm sure, that we need to take care of. So, but they should be getting it to us by the end of this week. So I don't know what everybody's schedule is like, or?
We're ready to have a work session on it. So just go ahead and schedule a work session for early August, Tuesday, Thursday, sixth and the eighth. August sixth. Can I go for a run, August sixth?
Just for? Just for the info?
Uh. No. We'll have that discussion further on that. We can, we can look at something else as well, that's okay. August sixth at five o'clock? Sorry, August sixth at five o'clock, okay. All right, moving on to item number four, the.
One second, one second about that, because at the original meeting, we had, you know, Nick and Mike and Sandra and Judy, all the partners were kind of a part of that original, if, you know, working with public sector, so would we want to have include them in the meeting as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to item number five, EPA compliance report, no news is good news. I still haven't heard back from them. And I'll make this finalize, some more paperwork with Jesse, for the report that's going to be here this month. So that's what we're standing on. Item number six, noise ordinance.
If you remember, Kurt was going to come in and do a presentation to the board. We hope that he'd be able to do it today, and he can, but he's committed to come in on August thirteenth. We just put it back on. He'll do a presentation to the board, and then I think the discussion will get to a point where we'll call for a public hearing. So he's got it on his calendar, really, for August.
That's our next board meeting?
That's our next board meeting, correct.
If you want to do it in a work session, make a check for them, for availability.
Uh, we're gonna do that. Yeah, we're, we're gonna have a couple of.
Like, well, can everybody, if it happens here before the work session, and maybe make notes, that's what my goal, I'm trying to get you all copied, like by the beginning of next week, so these are going to be a few weeks that everybody could at least review it, and see if there's any notes. So I don't know how.
It would depend on how much discussion we had here.
First, but it's out of town, so it's probably better, so more of the public will be here.
Okay. Item number seven, the Town Bantam Fire Inspection Law. The back of your book.
Yep, Nick and I have been through that, and just to back up a little bit, that came up, Nick put together what I'll call the nuts and holes of it, added to me, I put it in draft form, we've probably gone through a couple of iterations of that. That was distributed at the last board meeting, for any comment. I think we're at a point where we can call a public hearing, either today for the next board meeting, or August, or September. My thinking is, it's in pretty good shape if we find an implementation that Nick or John are finding they need to tweak it all, just kind of bring it back, but I think we're at a point where we probably, we're going to have either a risky for public hearing, or like I say, we can call for a public hearing in August or September.
So if we're ready to move on now, if you're comfortable with the end product, that's why it's a public hearing.
That's fine.
All right. With that, I would like to move on to setting a public hearing for August thirteenth at seven oh one for the Town Bandit Fire Inspection Local Law. So what remains, or second, what remains, second, is ready discussion? Moving on, last one, roll call, roll please.
Councilperson Exlander.
Aye.
Councilperson Browns. Aye. Councilperson Yessi.
Aye.
Deputy Supervisor Klein.
Aye.
And Supervisor White.
Aye, further adopted. Moving on to unfinished business. Moving on to new business, item number one, floor management. This is the item that I would like to bring to the next work session. I thought I had provided everyone with two courts, but I apparently did not, so I will make those copies, and we'll also have the discussion for management at that work session in August.
August sixth.
August sixth, right. And that information I'll copy in the mailbox to the ZB. Item number seven, Hollington Cemetery Request for Funding. We received a letter back last month from Mr. Wayne Blasberg, who is the president for the Hollington Cemetery Association, requesting consideration of the town to donate to the cemetery. What they're looking for is a donation and a continual donation from the town, an amount of fifteen hundred dollars per year, to operate the fund, another fund management, and the needing for the maintenance of the cemetery. Again, it's one of those dull edged swords that the town has now had the ability to contribute to the cemetery. If we don't, then in the near future, we will be taking care of the cemetery all along, because they will be defunct, and the town, by state law, is mandated to assume the care and maintenance of the cemeteries. So with that, we're looking for a donation of fifteen hundred dollars to be included in as a regular line item of the budget, starting fiscal year two thousand and fourteen. We're looking for the amount this year of fifteen hundred dollars. We do have funds available. So with that, I would, in motion to include the Hollington Cemetery Association, a donation of fifteen hundred dollars this year, and become a previously budgeted item in the town's, town's budget. What remains, is there a second, second, what remains, second, is there any discussion?
Did you see it, one more question?
We do, we, I would find fifteen hundred dollars this year.
Well, I think it's a good idea, I just, again, we had talked, and there's already one defunct cemetery, that we're really doing what we need to do, we really need to look at that one too, and starting to maintain that, so.
What's the defunct cemetery? It's up on the blue room.
It was actually brought to our attention, Memorial.
Isn't there one on Brady Hill at the end where the Civil War soldiers are?
Right, that's the one.
Oh, Brady Hill?
Brady Hill.
Brady Hill, I'm sorry, said Brady Hill, Brady Hill.
So what do we have to do to, like, pass it? What, just all maintain it, like there's no more, do they sell sites there anymore, or?
No, no, it's just maintenance of that, of that cemetery. And we'll have to take care of.
So I guess what I'm thinking, and it is still a discussion, do we act on it now, or do we think a little bit more about it, and think of how we can budget for possibly cemeteries as a whole, and we better, I don't know, think.
I think we can act on this now, and, you know, part of the budget process, get a firm understanding. I mean, I'm going to set a budget next month.
Right.
So it's already in progress. The cemetery.
So what would we do, just give them fifteen hundred dollars this year, and then maybe look at the line item, to put it all together?
Yes, cemetery maintenance. And we have two separate lines, Brady Hill site and Hollington Cemetery.
As far as I know, there's one on Ingram Hill too, but I don't think that's still.
Something you think are unbreakable.
I, I believe they're running like five.
I'm running, I'm Brady Hill.
Yeah.
Probably about thirty-five.
Are there that many?
Not that many. Some of them date back to Civil War, and actually, I believe, like seventeen hundred.
Are they outstayed?
Yes.
Now, we're not required, I mean, like, if somebody's headstone disintegrated or over, would we require to replace that?
Just me, please.
We also have one radar current. I mean, five rolls to pose it, but there is, it's the current, I believe, there is like, on that little section.
That's still maintained. That technically is not changed. Is there any further discussion? Moving on, I want to do a little, all those favor, aye, opposed. Youth Commission, last month we received a letter from Pathic Command, we design as the Director of Youth Activities, we now currently have a vacancy in the position. I have already received at least two letters, I know we have posted it on the town's website, and we'll be accepting applications till the end of this month. I'd like to try to have a new director in place to act at our, at our board meeting. I know we have put this in front of personnel committee in the past, I think this time we'd like to do is, I think, have the interview yourself, and then ask it to the board, so that's the way I'm handling it, we're trying to make it as straightforward as possible.
I think because, again, you're the B's under the youth, I think that's, seems appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item number three, Youth Commission can approval for purchase replacement of expired helmets. There was a bunch of Youth Commission's attention that the helmets actually have a life expectancy, and after ten years, you are required to replace helmets, and I believe our football program is, is ten years old now, and we are looking to meet with Representative Rydel and Higgybank of the Susquehanna Valley Big, and we're looking at the possibility of replacing what could be ninety to ninety-five helmets. Originally, the cost we were looking at was approximately eighty dollars a piece, and we're looking at about eight thousand dollars. However, the price that we're giving us, the initial pricing, is in between the sixty and sixty-five dollar range, we actually have a program where you buy so many helmets, you buy like six helmets, you get one helmet free. And so we're looking to authorize expenditures to purchase the helmets, the football program starts next month, and actually, at the end of this month, excuse me, it's only twenty-ninth, it's the first day of our practice, and so we're actually looking at expenditure probably in vicinity of sixty-five hundred and seven thousand. Again, I had located money and budget, it was not a budgeted item, because we were not aware in budget time that the helmets actually had the, and that turned throwaways on that. And so we're looking for the expenditure to have to exceed seven thousand dollars for the replacement of the helmets, and we're talking with your football program.
Now, doesn't the youth program have a line item, like do they have money there?
They do, but there, there is, this was an unbudgeted item, because they weren't aware of it. They have approximately thirty-two to thirty-three thousand dollars in a line item.
That's how much they have, do they?
To run all programs throughout the season, like the baseball, football, basketball, bowling, cheerleading, wrestling.
And does that include in that thirty-two thousand dollars, is that anticipated revenues that come in from signups?
Yeah, I mean, we had the discussions, the revenue side does help offset the expenditures, but the, the cost that we charge for the programs doesn't cover. We are one of the only towns in Blue County that actually has a town that participates actively in youth activities. They do not have a very big, huge budget, they actually, a lot of the talent they give is they depend on the booster clubs to help offset their costs. Even their registrations, they, I think I'm being handled, when a child participates football, it costs them between one hundred and twenty-five, one hundred and fifty dollars a year. Our cost is seventy dollars. And we try to keep our costs as affordable, so that the, as the kids get to visit, even with baseball, baseball's twenty dollars a year, and that's the hat, and the T-shirt, covers those costs. So what we'll have to do, moving this point forward, now that we know that we have these expertise dates, I think what we're going to do is just try to set up a reserve fund, like we've done for so many other things, you know, start to funnel some monies into youth activities, for these unexpected costs.
Only does the football league, they maybe have a fundraiser to help offset some of that too?
They, they, the booster club does, and, you know, booster clubs will not participate in helmets because they believe it's a, it's a town fund program. Booster club, what they do is they raise money for the banquets, they just sell a bandage at the counter, so their funds are pretty well dedicated to being banquets for the kids and help offset on small lots. So with that, I'm going to make, entertain motion to approve the purchase of the replacement of football helmets, and we're not going to exceed prices of seven thousand dollars.
So move.
What remains, there's a second, there's a second, there's a discussion.
He's also tenured, exonerated.
Yes.
Tim, how, the jury approve that?
We haven't taken hold.
I know, I know a gentleman named Dave Burge, he's, he's in contact with the NFL on any youth, it has to do with football.
Mm-hmm.
There's, there's money the NFL will donate.
Yeah, I've looked at that several years ago, and the criteria, we unfortunately didn't need it. Because I bet, when I first saw that, I thought that was an excellent source for us to be able to go out, but we're going to qualify.
But why?
Uh, because you have to be affiliated with a national. Uh, because you have to be affiliated with a national level program, and you have to buy insurance through that, that program, the NFL. And that's kind of like a tool that they try to get you spiritual to participate and be a, a certified member of that organization with a fund, with insurance, and all this stuff through, through you. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, just one, um, I think it's Steve Hassel that we had contact with.
Yes, Steve.
I know that the football helmets for us, they, they, they actually bring company right in there and they check them out. So, I mean, if we're truly partnering with them, we can have them check them out every year. What they do is they check them out, and if there's problems that you deal with, then...
That's actually another part of the program that we need to get involved with is the helmets go out, a certain number of helmets go out a year, and they stress test them.
Yep.
And part of that test is they make sure that the helmets are, uh, are safe, and they refurbish them. They replace all the, the masks, the clippings on the helmet, and then paint them. So, again, this is all stuff that under knows to the youth commission was a requirement. Now, with the high school, that's a state law, that they have to send the equipment out, they have to test.
Yeah.
Uh, we don't have those. However, with that said, if it's available to us, then we really should, you know, bring, bring a change of it just from the, the simple insurance factor, that we are maintaining the equipment to proper specs. Is there any further discussion? So being known, vote to a vote, all is a favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Item number five, the assessor's office, the reappointment of John McDonald to a six-year term. We are receiving a letter back in from Brim County stating that the term for the assessors are expiring this year, and the term for all assessor, appointed assessors, uh, will be six years. And John has sent a letter to everyone stating that he would be very interested in staying on as the assessor, and he's looking for the appointment for the six-year term. So with that, I will extend a motion for John McDonald as the assessor for the six-year term for the town. Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made, second, is there any discussion?
I was just curious when I was reading this over. Um, I know there's a, a fee that we pay John and that we pay for the staff in there, but then it says here that he shall be, uh, this shall be an additional amount to any compensation paid by the town directly to the assessor for assessor services performed on the behalf. So doesn't what we pay him include that on page three, compensation? I, I guess I wasn't quite sure what that, how that read.
You know, he receives a, a small segment from the town to serve as the assessor.
But he receives twenty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars, right?
Through the contract.
So we pay addition on that, and why is that?
Uh, that's a good question. I, is there a mandate on there?
No, I'm trying to remember whether, um, because isn't the contract with John's company enough? Because it's all for John.
Yes.
Yeah, and so, um, I think in order to at least have some mobile money that comes through the, the retirement system, I'm trying to remember what it was about. So it was broken apart into two different parts, it still adds up to the total, but he otherwise wouldn't have got.
Which is twenty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty, or more? He gets more? So I guess that's what I'm questioning is, why, why does he get more? I mean, I understand what you're saying, you know, but...
I'm only guessing, I think he's always gotten more. Um, that's when they went to the two parts, one to the company, one to him. It still adds up, if I remember right, it still adds up to the same amount.
All right, we do, so we, we'll hold off on this because we don't have to take action. The appointment doesn't start from the first, and we'll clarify all the, the answers.
Yeah, and I, I probably ought to just, I think it's probably a rear image of the contract.
Here's...
I mean, it says that there's no increases or whatever. I was just curious as a town, why we pay him this amount and additional amounts? And cover the secretary? Oh, we cover this? We, so we pay him this amount plus another amount plus coverage secretary?
I think it's the same total that it's always been, just...
Well, I know, but we can always rethink that total, right? I mean, there, we could decide that, I mean, I don't understand, can we just decide to pay him the twenty-three thousand dollars? Do we have to pay him that extra amount as well?
Let, let's get the brief down, you know, my explanation. All right, we're all just over. So it means we're a little over item number five and number six. Uh, moving on to item number seven, assessing the office, the appointment of Kate Carlson, a part-time clerical. John is asking for consideration of the appointment of Kate Carlson, a part-time clerical, to come in and work one day a week. Apparently, he's running into a situation with Amy Ritchie, and she's only able to work two days a week, uh, because of the summer with her children. And John is of the opinion, instead of not being able to have someone in the office, he'd prefer having someone in the office covering the hours. So he's approached Kate, and she's expressed an interest in, in serving in the office. Uh, so he's looking for the appointment of Kate Carlson as a part-time clerical for one day a week in, in the assessor's office.
Is that just for the summer?
Yes.
So just for the rest of the summer, that maybe we'll be back to three days a week?
Yes. And the rate will be at the clerical rate, which I believe is nine seventy-five? Whatever, I guess we'll have to verify that. So, how, can I, can I motion?
So move.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
May it be a second, is there any discussion? So being known, vote a vote, all is a favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Item number eight, board of assessment review, Carol Hurst's term is expiring at the end of this summer, and she's looking to be reappointed to be board of assessment review for a term of four years. I will extend a motion. Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made, second, is there any discussion?
I mean, I'm sorry, I sound kind of ignorant, but what is this?
The board of assessment reviews is a group that meets once a year to roll their challenges from residents from the assessment side.
Oh, agreement, board.
Agreement, yes. Okay, the clerical rate's nine fifty-five. So we'll add that to the motion, so... Thank you. Is there any further discussion? So being known, vote a vote, all is a favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Item number nine, sewer department, set public hearing for the rate, in case. We did have the informational meeting, uh, a few weeks ago. Wasn't very well attended, but unfortunately, we still need to move on to setting the public hearing. We do have a presentation that was given that night by Mr. Donahue, available for residents if they want to reach out to the town hall and pick it up. So with that, we do need to set the public hearing for the August, was it thirteenth? August thirteenth, meeting at seven oh two to increase sewer rates. I'll extend a motion. So, motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made, second, is there any discussion? So being known, I ask a vote, I'll vote, please?
Councilperson Exlander?
Aye.
Councilperson Rounds?
Aye.
Councilperson Yezzy? Deputy Supervisor Klein?
Aye.
And Supervisor Wechsler?
Aye. Clear and adopted.
Okay. Are you going to set public hearing for the public inspection?
No. We're going to go get through the work session, we're going to bring it to the work session. Then, Senator?
I'm going to go over there. I suppose, and they didn't, they didn't distribute that, so they turned it over to the work session. And we can talk through it.
Art?
That's the one that we have, that's it, that's all I have.
Well, it's set to public hearing and work on it, are you ready for it on the thirteenth?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to jump back up to item number one, the sewer floor management. I'd like to set public hearing as well, we can discuss it in the work session. Uh, because of time constraints, we'll set the public hearing and, uh, pull it down and our next work session, but we're ready to go with public hearing, there are obvious made. So I'll extend a motion, set the public hearing for the floor, uh, sewer floor management for August thirteenth at seven oh three. So, motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made, second, is there any discussion? So being known, I ask a vote, I'll vote, please?
Councilperson Exlander?
Aye.
Councilperson Rounds?
Aye.
Councilperson Yezzy?
Aye.
Deputy Supervisor Klein?
Aye.
And Supervisor Wechsler?
Aye.
Moving on to item number ten, we will help allow us to permit part-time employees. Uh, this, uh, this is to go my way of explanation. Uh, I'm working on a proposal. Uh, we actually have part-time employees that are not working twenty hours a week. They actually are falling under this benefits. Uh, I had a discussion with Councilperson Rounds about this, and she said it was included in the handbook. Uh, so what we'd like to do is take a look at the handbook when it comes in. Uh, I know I have a proposal that I think that I would like to set up in order to kind of weed away those people that, you know, quite honestly, are working less than twenty hours a week, getting benefits such as vacation time, uh, paid holidays. Uh, I just don't think part-time employees warrants those kind of benefits. Uh, it would be crazy, uh, but out of respect for Councilperson Rounds, I sent you a hold off, see what the handbook says, uh, and take this, just take this issue up in our August meeting as well. So I'm sure we're having this discussion regarding the handbook.
Yes, and, and we just so you all know that it was something that was discussed at the meeting with the, um, public sector, you know, specifically what we were defining and what benefits they were or were not getting. So when that comes back, we can fine tune it if it's not quite what we want, but it was a topic that will be addressed, was addressed at the meeting. So I thought, instead of doing possibly a redundancy of something, let's just wait till that comes through.
And moving on to item number eleven, comprehensive plan, item, actually, item number sixteen, the minimum lot size. Uh, I've actually spent the last weekend half trying to figure if we had done something because according to my notes on my comprehensive worksheet, comprehensive plan worksheet, says that we did take some action on minimum lot size timeframe that we were talking about. Uh, and it does not appear as though that action, because I wanted to be able to have the information board members were discussing that night. Uh, fortunately, found out, uh, through the police office this afternoon that we had not taken up the issue. That's why you folks didn't have it in your mailboxes and, uh, discuss this issue. Now, if you know that, I'll be putting copies of that actual item in the mailbox, and so we can take this up at our August meeting as well. So comprehensive hearing for a lengthy board meeting in August. This mitigation plan, now, we just passed a resolution approving the town's hazard mitigation plan. Uh, it has been some back to Brim County. Uh, Brim County has the final approval, and they're asking from the towns to, again, adopt a resolution for the Brim County Multi-Jurisdictional All-Hazard Mitigation Plan as was approved. And we have presented the resolution, so with that, I'll extend a motion, approving the resolution, authorizing the adoption of the Brim County Multi-Jurisdictional All-Hazard, All-Hazard Mitigation Plan. Anybody?
So...
Motion made, is there a second?
I'm asking.
Motion made, second, is there any discussion? So being known, all is a favor?
Aye.
Ayes? Motion carried. Anyone who thinks this works this time?
Can I get an official statement or over so that they know exactly I want this guy to, or, you know, on, from your, uh, footprint?
Sure, just give me a, please.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else? So being known, most important, bring it back to the board. We do need to go into executive session and discuss a legal matter. Uh, and again, it's the time of the meeting, but if you'd like to stay, I'd avoid the welcome to stay, but when we come out of the executive session, there will be no action taken. Uh, we'll just be adjouring the meeting officially. Otherwise, you're welcome to adjouring the rest of the all meeting. And with that, I will extend a motion to go into executive session and discuss a legal matter.
So move.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made, second, is there any discussion? So being known, vote a vote, all is a favor?
Aye.
Opposed?